Krishna, hare, hare, hare Rama, hare Rama, 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 hare, hare. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna. Let's rukhiyatan and we are gonna start with chapter eighty-ninth. Yes. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna. Krishna, Krishna, hare, hare. Hare Rama, hare Rama. Rama, Rama, hare, hare. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna. Krishna, Krishna, hare, hare. Hare Rama, hare Rama. Rama, Rama, hare, hare. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna. Krishna, Krishna, hare, hare. Hare Rama, hare Rama. Rama, Rama, hare, hare. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna everyone, many, many thanks for everyone to join in and let's understand, let's try to understand Krishna book, English and hmm. Yeah, so look, Shrimad Bhagavatam has been created by Vedavyasa on the instruction of Narada Muni. Now Narada Muni is a devotee, Vedavyasa is Bhagwan, Swamam Bhagwan, right? Vedavyasa is no other than Krishna himself. Yeah, link has not mentioned. Vedavyasa is no other than Krishna himself. Now Vedavyasa creates this opportunity to hear Shrimad Bhagavatam and thereafter Krishna book is just tenth canto of Shrimad Bhagavatam. So just a part of Shrimad Bhagavatam. Yeah, ah, so hmm. Shrimad Bhagavatam is even more delightful. Now this is delightful for devotees, this is delight for, for non-devotees as well, but non-devotees would not be able to appreciate it. Yeah, that's the difference. Now, the whole Shrimad Bhagavatam has been created for just two purpose, to glorify devotee and to glorify Lord. So all through this while, we have been glorifying devotees of Lord and Lord itself. Yeah, Krishna and his devotees. Yeah, all through this while, we have been glorifying them. Now we are at the end of Krishna book and we are glorifying Krishna. This chapter is eighty-ninth, the super excellent power of Krishna. So we read some of it last time around, we will be continuing from there. Yeah, so let's, let's read and let's try and understand whatever best we could and let's surrender onto Krishna for us to making us understand the rest of it. Because ideally, we would never be able to understand even a word of Bhagavad Gita and Shrimad Bhagavatam and even the name of Krishna, we would not be able to understand through our own material mind, through our own material eyes. Yeah, so we are continuing from this pastime. Hare Krishna, hare Krishna. Now, chapter eighty-nine and ninety-eight are both voluminous, it would take time, so I would be going fast as well as wherever required, I would be continuing with explanations. Okay, this is chapter eighty-ninth and we are continuing with Krishna book. Once upon a time in Dwarka, Brahmana's wife gave birth to a child. Unfortunately however, just after being born and touched, touching the ground, the child immediately died. The Brahmana's, Brahmana father took the child and went directly to the palace of the king. The Brahmana was very upset because of the untimely death of his child in the presence of his young father, in the presence of his young father and mother. Thus, his mind became very much disturbed formerly when there was, there were responsible kings. Up to the time of Dwapar Yuga, when Lord Krishna was present, the king was liable to be blamed for the untimely death of the child in the presence of his parents. Similarly, such a responsibility was there during the time of Lord Ramchandra as we have explained in the first canto of Shrimad Bhagavatam. The king was so responsible for the comforts of the citizen that he was to see that there was not even excessive heat or cold. Now the Brahmana, whose child had died, thinking there was no fault of his own part, immediately went to the palace door with the dead child in his arm and accused the king as follows. Now, please try and understand why king is being accused and why king has to take care of, of the child. Please understand. Now, the king was following orders of Krishna. And because the king is following orders of Krishna, how can it be fallible? Krishna is unfallible. When Krishna is unfallible, how can wrong thing happen? The subjects or the citizens would say that, dear king, I am doing this only because you told me to do this. And it was responsibility of king to see to it that everything happens on the instruction of Krishna. By following his guru or Rajguru's order. Okay, the present king, Ugrasena is envious of the Brahmanas. The exact word used in this connection is Brahma Dvisha. One who is envious of the Vedas, of the qualified Brahmana or the Brahmana kas is called Brahma Dvis. So the king was accused of being Brahma Dvis. He was also accused of being Sathadihi. Falsely intelligent. Shatha, shatha dvihi, dihi. Falsely intelligent. The executive head of the state must be very intelligent to see to the comforts of the citizen, but according to the Brahmana, the king was not at all intelligent although he was occupied, he occupied, he was occupying the royal throne. Therefore, the Brahmana is also called as Dubda, which means greedy. In other words, a king or an executive head of the state should not occupy the exotic position of the king, president or king if he is greedy or self-interested, but it is natural that the executive head becomes self-interested when he is attached to the material enjoyment. Therefore, another word used here is Vasva, Vasvat Atmanah. So the king should occupy the throne only when he is not greedy. The Brahmana also accused the king of being Shatra, Sha, Sha, Shatra Bandhu, which means a person born in the family of Shatriya or the royal order but lacking the qualification of the royal personality. A king should protect Brahmanical culture, gopramanitayach. A king should protect Brahmanical culture and should be very alert to the welfare of the citizen. Now this is the responsibility of a Shatriya to protect Brahmana, it is his prescribed duty. A king should protect Brahmanical culture and should be very alert to the welfare of his citizen. He should not be greedy due to the attachment to material enjoyment if a person with no qualification represent himself as a Shatriya or the royal order. He is called Sha, Sha. He is not called a Shatriya but a Shatra Bandhu. Similarly, a person born in the Brahmana, Brahmana fa, of a Brahmana father but has no Brahmanical qualification, he is called Brahma Bandhu or Dvaj Bandhu. This means that a Brahmana or Shatriya is not accepted simply by birth. He has no quality himself for the particular position, only that he is accepted as a Brahmana or a Shatriya. Thus a Brahmana changed, thus a Brahmana charged that his newly born baby was dead due to the disqualifications of the king. The Brahmana took it to be most unnatural and therefore he held the king responsible. We also find in the vedic history that if a Shatriya king was irresponsible, sometimes a consulting board of Brahmanas maintained by the munaki would dethrone him. Again, this is talking about Rajguru and gurus. Sometimes the consulting board of the Brahmanas, who are these Brahmanas? Those gurus, Rajgurus, who used to take the responsibility. Maintained by the munaki would dethrone, dethrone them. Considering all these points, it appears that the post of munak in the vedic civilization is very responsible one. The Brahmana therefore said, no one should offer respects to the worship or worship to the king whose only business is envy. Such a king spends his time either hunting or killing and killing animals in the forest or killing citizen for criminal acts, he has no self-control and possesses bad character. If such a king is worshipped or honored by the citizen, the citizen would never be happy. They will always remain poor, full of anxiety and aggrievement and always unhappy. In modern politics, the post of munak has been abolished, the president is not held responsible for the comforts of the citizen. In this age of Kali, the executive head of the state somehow or other gets votes and is elected to the exalted post, but the condition of the citizen continues to be full of anxiety, distress, unhappiness and dissatisfaction. The Brahmana's second child also died at birth and third also, he had nine child who all died at birth and each time he came to the gate of the palace to accuse the king. When the Brahmana came and to accuse the king of Dwarka, for the ninth time Arjuna happened to be present with Krishna on hearing that Brahmana was accusing the king of not properly protecting him. Arjuna became inquisitive and approached the Brahmana. He said, my dear Brahmana, why do you say that there is no, there are no proper Shatriya to protect the citizen of your country? Is it not even some, someone who can pretend to be a Shatriya, who can carry a bow and arrow at least to make a show of protection? Do you think that all the royal personalities in this country simply engage in the performing sacrifices with the Brahmana but have no chivalrous power? Thus Arjuna indicated that the Shatriya should not sit back comfortably on the pretext of performing vedic ritual but must rather be a chivalrous, chivalrous. In protecting the citizens, Brahmana being accused in spiritual activities are not expected to do anything which requires physical endeavor. Therefore, they need to be protected by Shatriyas so that they will not be disturbed in the execution of, of their higher occupational duties. So Shatriya must protect Brahmana, that is the responsibility of a Shatriya, that is the responsibility of a Shatriya. If the Brahmanas feel unwanted separation from their wives and children, Arjuna continued and the Shatriya kings do not care of them, then such Shatriya are to be considered no more than stage players. This is drama, dramatist. In, okay, yeah, it is written. In dramatic performance in the theater, an actor may play a part of a king but no, no one expects any benefit from such a make-believe king. Make-believe means, you have to believe. You do not believe but you have to believe, that's the situation. Make-believe king. Similarly, if, if the king or the executive head of the state cannot give protection to the head of the social structure, he is considered merely a bluffer. Such executive heads simply live on their own livelihood while occupying the exalted position as chiefs of the state. My lord, I promise that I shall give protection to your children and I am, I am unable and if I, if I am unable to do so, then I shall enter into the blazing fire so that the sinful contamination which has infected me would be, will be counteracted upon hearing Arjuna speak in this way, the Brahmana replied. My dear Arjuna, Lord, Lord Bal Rama is present, but he could not give protection to my children. Lord Krishna is also present but he also could not give them protection. There are also many other heroes such as Pradhyamana, Aniruddha, carrying bows and arrows but they cannot protect my children. The Brahmana directly hinted that Arjuna could not do that, which was impossible for the supreme personality of Godhead. A devotee can do everything on the, on the powers given by Krishna himself. So he is saying that Arjuna can do anything. He felt that Arjuna was promising something beyond his power. The Brahmana said, I consider your promise to be like that, to be like that of an inexperienced child. I cannot put my faith on your promise. Arjuna then understood that the Brahmana had lost all faiths in the Shatriya kings. Therefore, to encourage him, Arjuna spoke if, as if in criticizing even his friend Lord Krishna. While Lord Krishna and others were listening, he specifically attacked Krishna by saying, my dear Brahmana, I am neither sankarshna nor Krishna, nor one of Krishna's son like Pradhyamna or Aniruddha. My name is Arjuna and I carry the bow known as Gandiva. You cannot insult me for I have satisfied even Lord Shiva by my prowess. When we were both hunting in the forest, I had, I had a fight with Lord Shiva, who appeared before me as a hunter and when I satisfied him by my prowess, he gave me the weapon known as Pashupatastra. Do not doubt my chivalry. I shall bring back your son even if I have to fight with the death person fight. When the Brahmana was assured by Arjuna in such exalted words, he was somehow or other convinced that he, thus, and thus, he returned home. When the Brahmana's wife was to give birth to another child, Brahmana began to chant, my dear Arjuna, please now, please come now and save my child. After hearing Arjuna, immediately prepared himself by touching the sanctified water and uttering holy mantras to protect, to protect his bow and arrow from danger and spec, specifically he took the arrow presented to him by Lord Shiva and while going out, he remembered Lord Shiva and with great favor, and his great favor. In this way, he appeared in front of the maternity home equipped with his bow known as Gandiva and various other weapons. Arjuna, who apparently not, not left Dwarka because he had to fulfill his promise to the Bal, to, to the Brahmana was caught at night with the Brahmana's wife, was called at the Brahmana, was called at night when the Brahmana's wife was to give birth to the child while going to the maternity home to attend to the delivery case of the Brahmana's wife. Arjuna remembered Lord Shiva and not his friend Krishna. He thought that since Krishna could not give protection to the Brahmana, it was better to take shelter of torture. Now this is incorrect, but Arjuna is showing, showing some qualities, exhibiting. This is another instance of how a person takes shelter of the demigod, this is explained in Bhagavad Gita. A person who loses his intelligence because of the greed and fear, greed and lust for gets a supreme personality of God and, and takes shelter of demigods. Of course, Arjuna was not an ordinary living being but because of his friendly dealings with Krishna, he thought that Krishna was unable to give protection to the Brahmana and he would depend, he would better to remember Lord Shiva. Later, it was proved that Arjuna was taking shelter of Lord Shiva instead of Krishna was not at all successful. Arjuna however did, did his best by chanting the different mantras and his shot arrows up and down to guard the maternity home with, from all the direction. The Brahmana's wife delivered the male child and as usual, the child began to cry, but suddenly, within a few minutes, both the child and Arjuna's arrow disappeared into the sky. It appears that the Brahmana's house was near Krishna's residence and Lord Krishna was enjoying everything that was taking place, apparently in defiance of his authority. It was he who played the trick of taking away the Brahmana's baby by, as well as the arrows, including the one given by Lord Shiva, of which Arjuna was so proud. Less intelligent men take shelter to the demigod due to the bewilderment and are satisfied with the temporary benefits they award in the presence of Lord Krishna and others. The Brahmana began to accuse Arjuna. Everyone see my foolishness, I put my faith in the works of Arjuna, who is an, who is important and who is expert only in false promises. How foolish I was to believe Arjuna, he promised to protect my child when even Pradhyamna, Aniruddha. Lord Bal Rama and Lord Krishna had failed. If such great personalities could not protect my child, then who can do so? I therefore condemn Arjuna for his false promise and I also condemn his celebrated bow Gandiva and his impudence in declaring himself greater than Lord Bal Rama, Lord Krishna, Pradhyamna and Aniruddha. How can anyone save my child who has already been transferred to another planet due to sheer foolishness? Only Arjuna thought he could bring back my child from another planet. Thus condemned by Brahmana, Arjuna empowered himself with great mystic yoga perfection so that he could travel to another planet to find Brahmana's baby. It seemed that Arjuna had mastered the mystic yoga power by which the yogis can travel to any planet they desire. He first of all went to the planet known as Yamaloka, where the superintendent death Yamraj lives. They researched for the Brahmana's boy but he was, but was unable to find him. Then he immediately went to the planet where the king of heaven, Indra lives. When unable to find the baby there, he went to the planet of fire god, then to find, then to the planet of Nithri, demigod, and then to the moon planet. Then he went to Bayu Loka and then Varuna Loka. When unable to find a baby on those planets, he went hmm. When unable to find a baby on those planets, he went down to the Rasatala planet, the lowest of the planetary system. After traveling to all these planets, he finally went to Brahmaloka, where every mystic yogi, yogis cannot go. By the grace of Lord Krishna, Arjuna had that power. And he went above the heavenly planets to Brahmaloka. When he was unable to find a baby even after searching all the possible planets, he attempted to throw himself into a fire since he had promised the Brahmana that he, that he would do so. If unable to bring back his baby, Lord Krishna however was very kind towards Arjuna because Arjuna was the most intimate friend of Lord. Lord Krishna persuaded Arjuna not to enter the fire in disgrace. Krishna indicated that since Arjuna was his friend, if he were to enter the fire of hopelessness, indirectly it would be a blemish on him. Lord Krishna therefore checked Arjuna, assuring him that he would find the baby. He told Arjuna, do not foolishness, foolishly commit suicide. After addressing Arjuna in this way, Lord Krishna called for the transcendental chariot. He mounted it along with Arjuna and began to proceed north. Lord Krishna, the all-powerful personality of Godhead could not, could have, he can do anything, could have brought the child back without effort, but we should always remember that he was playing the part of a human being. Now, we should also, also see Arjuna as taking part as well. Yeah, Arjuna is acting as well, it is not that Arjuna is not acting. Arjuna is the purest devotee. So he is exhibiting some qualities. Similarly, Krishna, Krishna is Bhagwan himself, so he was acting. By acting in the, by appearing in the human society and exhibiting his pastime as a human being, Krishna definitely showed that there was not, not a single personality greater than he. God is great, that is the definition of the supreme personality of Godhead. So at least within this material world, while he was present, Krishna proved that there was no greater personality within the universe. Seated on the chariot of Krish, seated on the chariot with Krishna. Seated on the chariot with Arjuna, Krishna proceeded north, crossing the many planetary systems. These are described in Shrimad Bhagavatam as Sapta Duipa, duipa means island. These planets are sometimes described in the vedic literature as duipa. The planet on which we are living is called Jambu Duipa. The outer space is taken as a great ocean of air and within that great ocean of air, there are many island which are different planets. On each and every planet, there are also, there are oceans also. So there is a big ocean and that big ocean, there are many planets and in those planets, there are internally, there are oceans also. On some of the planets, the ocean are, are of salt water and on some of them, these are ocean of milk. On the others, there are ocean of liquor, on the other, there are ocean of ghee or oil. There are different kinds of mountain also, each and every planet have different kind of atmosphere. Krishna passed all, over all the, these planets and reached the covering of the universe. This covering is described in Shrimad Bhagavatam as great darkness. The material world as a whole is described as dark, in the open space, there is sunlight and therefore it is illuminated, but in the covering, because of the absence of sunlight, it is naturally dark. When Krishna approached the covering layer of the universe, the four horses which were drawing his chariot, Shabha, Sugriva, Megapushpa and Baha, Bhalaka, Balahakka, all hesitated to enter the darkness. This hesitation is also as a part of the pastime of Lord Krishna because the horses of Krishna are not ordinary. It is not possible for the ordinary horses to go all over the universes and then enter into the outer covering layers. As Krishna is transcendental, his chariot and his horses and everything is about him are also transcendental beyond the qualities of the material world. We should always remember that Krishna was playing the part of the ordinary human being and his horses also by the will of Krishna played the part of ordinary horses in hesitating to enter the darkness. Krishna is known as Yogeshvara. As stated in the last portion of Bhagavad Gita, Yogeshvara, Yogeshvaro Harya. Hari. Yogeshvaro Hari. All mystic powers are under his control. In our experience, we can see many human beings who have yogic mystic powers and who sometimes perform very wonderful act. But Krishna is understood to be master of mystic, mystic power. Therefore, when he saw that his horses were hesitant to proceed into darkness, he immediately released a disc known as Sudarshana Chakra, which illuminated the sky a thousand times brighter than the sunlight. Darkness of the covering of the universe is also a creation of Krishna and Sudarshana Chakra is Krishna's constant companion. Thus he penetrated the darkness by keeping the Sudarshana Chakra before him. Srimad Bhagavatam states that the Sudarshana Chakra penetrated the darkness just as the arrow released from the Sharanga. Bow of Lord Ramchandra penetrated the army of Ravana. Su means very nice. Darshana means observation. By the grace of Lord Krishna's Sudarshana, Sudarshana, everything that can be seen very nicely and nothing can remain in darkness. Thus, Lord Krishna and Arjuna crossed over the great region of darkness covering the material universes. Arjuna was then, Arjuna then saw the effulgence of light known as Brahmajyotir. The Brahmajyotir is situated outside the covering of the material universes and because it cannot be seen without present eyes, Brahmajyotir is sometimes called Abhitya. Avyakta. Avyakta, avyakta, avyakt. Okay, this is avyakt. Brahmajyotir is also called Avyakta. This is spiritually effulgence is, is the ultimate destination of the impersonal is known as Vedantist. The Brahmajyotir is also described in the Ananta Param. Unlimited and unfathomable. When Lord Krishna and Arjuna reached to this region of Brahmajyotir, Arjuna could not, Arjuna could not tolerate the glaring effulgence and he closed his eyes, Lord Krishna and Arjuna. Lord Krishna's and Arjuna's reaching the Brahmajyotir region is described in the Harimamsa. In that portion of Vedic literature, Krishna informs Arjuna, my dear Arjuna, the glaring effulgence, the transcendental light you are seeing is my bodily, bodies rays, my bodily is rays. So this is coming from Krishna. Oh chief of descendant of Bharta, this Brahmajyotir is I myself, as the sun disc. And the sansayin, sansayin cannot be separated Krishna and his bodily rays and Brahmajyotir cannot be separated. Thus Krishna claims that the Brahmajyotir is he himself. This is Brahman, Brahman realization. This is clearly stated in Harimamsa when Krishna says, ahamsa. Brahmajyotir, the Brahmajyotir is a combination of the mindure particles known as spiritual sparks or the living entity is known, known as chitkana. In the Vedic words, so ahum. Ayam, the Brahmajyotir can also be applied to all the living entities who can claim to be, to belong to Brahmajyotir. In the Harimamsa Krishna further explains. The Brahmajyotir is an expansion of my spiritual energy. Krishna told Arjuna, the Brahmajyotir is beyond the region of my, my external energy. Beyond, okay, external energy. Krishna told Arjuna, now there are two energies of Krishna. Right, internal energy and external energy. Now external energy cannot be in touch or contact with this higher pratva. What is this higher pratva? Brahmajyotir. Krishna told Arjuna that Brahmajyotir is beyond the region of my external energy known as Maya Shakti. When one is situated within the material world, it is not possible to experience the Brahmana effulgence. In other words, in the material world, this effulgence is not manifested whereas in the spiritual world, it is manifested. That, that is the purport of the, of the words of vyakta, avyakta in the Harimamsa. In the Bhagavad Gita, it is also said, avyaktvyaakta sanatna. Both these energies are eternally manifested. After this, Lord Krishna and Arjuna entered vast spiritual water. The spiritual water is known as Karna Ocean, which means that this ocean is the origin of the creation of the material world. This place is known as Viraja because it is free from the influence of the three qualities of the material world. In Vedic literature, there is a vivid description of the Karna Ocean or the Viraja. It is stated that the highest planetary system within the world, the material world is called, is Satyaloka. Now, this is one, this one, what is Brahman? It is stated that the higher planetary system within the material world is Satyaloka or Brahmaloka, which, look Brahmaloka and Brahman. Beyond which are Rudraloka and Mahavishnu. Regarding the Mahavishnuloka, it is stated in Brahmasamita. Lord Mahavishnu is lying in the Karna Ocean where he exhales. Innumerable universes comes out and when he inhales, innumerable universes enter within him. In this way, a material creation is generated and again withdrawn. When Lord Krishna and Arjuna entered the water, it appeared that there was no strong hurricane of transcendental effulgence blowing. And the water of Karna Ocean was greatly agitated by, by grace of Lord Krishna, Arjuna had the unique experience of being able to see the very beautiful Karna Ocean. Accompanied by Krishna, Arjuna saw a large palace within the water where there are thousands of pillars and columns made of valuable jewels and glaring effulgence of those columns and was so beautiful that Arjuna was charmed by it. Within that palace, Krishna, Arjuna and Krishna saw the gigantic form. Within that palace, Arjuna and Krishna saw the gigantic form of Anantadeva, who is also known as Shesha. Lord Ananta or Sheshnaga was in the form of great serpent with thousands of hooves. Each one decorated with valuable effulgent jewels. Beautifully dazzling, each of Anantadeva hood had two eyes, which appeared very fearful. His body was as white as the mountaintop of Kalash. Which is always covered with snow. His neck were bluish. As were his tongue. Lord Krishna showed the Shesha Naga form and he also saw that on that very soft white body of Sheshnaga. Lord Mahavishnu was lying very comfortably. He appeared all pervading and very powerful and Arjuna could understand that the supreme personality of Godhead in the form, in that form is known as Purushottama. He is, he is known as Purushottama, the supreme personality of Godhead because from his form emanates within the material world. Another form, Vishnu, known as Garbhadaksha Vishnu. The Mahavishnu form of the lord is called Purushottama, Purushuttama. Because he is beyond the material world, tama means darkness, ut means above. Transcendental, therefore uttama means above the darkness of the material world. Arjuna saw the bodily color of Purushottama. Mahavishnu was as dark as the new cloud in the rainy season. He was dressed in the nice, very nice yellow clothing. His face beautifully smiling and his eyes and his beautiful earrings enhance the beauty of the curling hair of his head. Lord Mahavishnu had eight arms, all very long, reaching to his neck, knees. His neck was decorated with the Kostuba jewel and his chest was marked with the symbol of Sriwasta, which means the resting place of the god is fortune. The lord who wore the, wore a garland of lotus flowers down to his knees. This long garland is known as Verganti garland. The lord was attended by his personal associate Narada and Sunanda. And the personified Sudarshana disc was also standing by him. As stated in the Vedas, the lord has innumerable energies and they also stood there in their personified forms. The most important among them were, were as follows. Pushti, the energy of nu- nutrition. Sri, energy of beauty. Kirti, energy of reputation. Ajah, the energy of material creation. All these energies are invested in the administrators of the material world, known, material world, namely Lord Brahma, Lord Shiva, Lord Vishnu and also in Indra, the kind of, the king of heavenly planets. Chandravaruna and San God. In other words, these demigods being empowered by the lord with certain energies engaged in transcendental loving service of the supreme personality of Godhead. The Mahavishnu feature is an expansion of Krishna's body. The Brahmasamita confirms that Mahavishnu is a portion of the planetary expansion of Krishna. All such expansion are non-different from the personality of Godhead. But since Krishna appeared within the material world to manifest his pastime as a human being, he and Arjuna immediately offered their respects to Lord Mahavishnu by bowing down before him. It is stated in Srimad Bhagavatam that Krishna offered respect to Mahavishnu. This means Krishna offered obeisances and to no other than himself. But because Lord Mahavishnu was, is non-different from Krishna, because Lord Mahavishnu is non-different from Krishna himself. This offering of obeisances from Krishna to Mahavishnu is, is not, however, in the form of worship known as a graho upasana. Which is sometimes recommended by persons trying to elevate themselves to the spiritual world by performing the sacrifice of knowledge. Such persons are also mentioned in Bhagavad Gita. Although there is no necessity for Krishna to offer obeisances because he is master, he taught, he, he taught Arjuna just how to, respect should be, just how respect should be offered to Lord Mahavishnu. Arjuna however become, became very much afraid upon seeing the gigantic form of everything. Distinct from the material experience. Seeing Arjuna offer, offering respects to Lord Mahavishnu, he immediately followed him and he stood before lord with folded hands. After this, the gigantic form of Mahavishnu greatly pleased, smiled pleasingly and spoke as follows. My dear Krishna and Arjuna, I am very eager to see both of you and therefore I arranged to take away the babies of Brahmana and keep them here. I have been expecting to see both at, see you both at this place, palace. You have appeared in the material world as my incarnation in order to minimize the force of demoniac person who burned, who burdened the world. Now after killing all these unwanted demons, you will, you will please come back to me. The two of you are incarnation of the great sage Nannarayana. Although you are both complete in yourself to protect the devotees and to annihilate demons and especially to establish the religious principle in the world so that, so that the tranquility may continue. You are teaching the basic principles of the factual religion so that the people of the world may follow you and thereby be peaceful and prosperous. So that is the only objective. The objective is to teach everyone to do the right thing. And when you have to teach anyone to do the right thing, you have to act in a certain manner. Because people of this material world are fallible. They are prone to failures. Now when they are prone to failures, they would be doing wrong things. Not intentionally, but eventually. So that's the, that's the thing and there, that is how Arjuna says to Krishna. Something offensive and that is how Arjuna is taking shelter of Lord Shiva and rejecting Krishna for some time. Yeah, that is exhibition, not reality. Lord Krishna and Arjuna then offered their respects, respect, offered their obeisances to Lord Mahavishnu and taking back the Brahmana's children and they returned to Dwarka via the same route by which they had entered the spiritual world. All the children of the Brahmana had duly grown up. After returning to Dwarka, Lord Krishna and Arjuna delivered the Brahmana all with the son, all his sons. Arjuna however was stuck with great wonder after visiting the transcendental world by the grace of Lord Krishna and by the grace of Krishna, he could understand that whatever opulence there may be within the material world is an emanation from him. Any opulent position a person may have within this material world is due to Krishna's mercy. One should therefore always be in Krishna consciousness in complete gratefulness to Krishna, Lord Krishna. Because whatever one may possess is all possessed by him. Arjuna's wonderful experience due to the mercy of Krishna is one of the many thousand pastimes performed by Lord Krishna during his stay in the material world. They were all unique and had no parallel in the, in the history of the world. All these pastimes proved fully that Krishna is the Supreme Personality of God it. Yet when present with this material world, he played, he played like an ordinary man with many worldly duties. He played the part of ideal householder possessing more than sixteen thousand wives, sixteen thousand palaces, one lakh sixty thousand children. And in that role. He performed many sacrifices just to teach the royal order how to live in the material world for the welfare of humanity. As the ideal supreme personality, he perform, he fulfilled the desires of everyone. From Brahmana, the highest persons in the human society down to. The ordinary living entities including the lowest among men. Just like, just as King Indra is in charge of distributing rain all over the world just to satisfy everyone. In due course, so Lord Krishna satisfy everyone by powering, powering. By pouring down his causeless mercy. His mission was to give protection to the devotees and to kill the demoniac kings. Therefore he killed many hundreds and thousands of demons. Some of them he killed personally and some of them were killed by Arjuna who was deputed by Krishna. In this way, he established many pious kings such as Udyastara at the helm of the world, world affairs. Thus by his divine arrangement, he created a good governance of King Udyastara. And the, and, and there ensured peace and tranquility thus in the Bhaktivedanta Purport for the eighty-nine chapter of Krishna. The super excellent power of Krishna. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. So this, this is about the opulence that Krishna has and. Krishna actually has everything but this pastime was to just to make everyone understand that. We need to eventually surrender onto Krishna. And till the time we are not surrendering onto Krishna, we are actually playing with Krishna. We think we are playing with Krishna but we are, we, we are, but we are being played by the, the material energies of Krishna. No one can play with Krishna. Yeah? So some of us feel that we, I would not be praying to Krishna, I would be praying to Shiva. I would be praying to Durga, I would be praying to Indra, I would be praying to Chandra. Now who, how are they getting powers from? Where are they getting powers from? Whom are they getting powers from? No other than Krishna. Because of the causeless mercy of Krishna. So the, these, these all are getting powers from Krishna, so we must surrender onto Krishna. That's a simple understanding that we have. Yeah, moving on to chapter ninety-eight and just one more thing, we have one more class left. We have one more class left. We have, we have class on this one. This one. Two days before Diwali, right, next week would be twenty-second. So we would end this on twenty-second. Let's talk fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes whatever for this ninety-eighth chapter. And we would eventually end on this one, ninety, on twenty-second. Why, why stretch it way too far? Okay, this is chapter ninety-eight summary, description of Lord Krishna's pastime after returning from the spiritual kingdom which was, which he was unable to visit personally. After returning from the spiritual kingdom which he was able to visit personally with Krishna. Arjuna was very much pleased, was very much astonished. He thought to himself that although he was an ordinary living entity by the grace, grace of Krishna, it has been possible. For him to see the spiritual world. Not only had he seen the spiritual world but he had also personally seen the original Mahavishnu. The cause of material creation. It is said that Krishna never goes out of Vrindavana. Vrindavanam. Parityaagya padam ekam nagachati. I would not step a one, one step outside Vrindavan. Krishna is, is supreme in Mathura. He is more supreme in Dwarka. He is most supreme in Vrindavan. Krishna's pastime in Dwarka are displayed by the Vasudevah portion yet there is no difference between the Vasudevah portion. Manifested in Mathura in Dwarka and the original manifestation of Krishna in Vrindavan. In the beginning of this book, we have discussed that when Krishna appears, all his incarnation planetary portion and portion of the planet. And portions of the planetary portions comes with him. Thus some of these pa- pastimes are manifested not by original Krishna himself. But by his expansion and expansion is no other than Krishna himself. Why Arjuna was puzzled by, by Krishna's going to Karna, Karnam Dakshay Vishnu. In the spiritual world is fully discussed in the commentaries of Shilpa Vishwanarayana Chakravarti Thakur as follows. It is understood from the speech, speech of Mahavishnu that he was eager to see Krishna. It may be said however that since Mahavishnu took away Brahmana's son. He certainly have gone to Dwarka to do so. Therefore, why did he not see Krishna there? A possible answer is that unless Krishna gives his permission, he cannot see. He cannot be seen even by Mahavishnu lying in the causal ocean of the spiritual world. Thus Mahavishnu took away the Brahmana's son one after another just, just as their births. Just after their birth so that Krishna would come personally to the causal ocean to retrieve them. And then Mahavishnu would be able to see, see him there. If that is so, the next question is this. Why would Mahavishnu come to Dwarka personally? If he were not able to see Krishna? Why did he not send some of his associates to take away the son of Brahmana? A possible answer is that. It is very difficult to put any of the citizens of Dwarka into trouble. In the presence of Krishna therefore because it was not possible for any Mahavishnu's associate to take away Brahmana's son, he personally came to take them. Another question may be raised. The Lord is known, known as Brahmana Deva, Deva. The worship, worshipable deity of Brahmanas. So why was he inclined to put a Brahmana into such terrible condition of limitation? Over one such, one son after another until the tenth son was taken away? The answer is that Lord Mahavishnu was so eager to see Krishna that he did not hesitate. Even to give trouble to a Brahmana. Although giving trouble to Brahmana is a forbidden act. Lord Vishnu was prepared to do anything in order to see Krishna. He was so eager to see him after losing each of his sons. Brahmana would come to the gate of the royal palace and accuse the king of not be, of, of not being able to give Brahmana protection. And thus being unfed to sit on the royal throne. It was Mahavishnu's plan that the Brahmana would accuse the Shatriya and the king and. Krishna would be obliged to come, see him and take back Brahmana's son. Still another question may be raised, if Mahavishnu cannot see Krishna then how was Krishna obliged to come before him? After all to take back the son of a Brahmana? The answer is that Lord Krishna went to see Mahavishnu not exactly to take back the son of Brahmana but only for Arjuna's sake. His friendship with Arjuna was so intimate that when Arjuna prepared himself to die by entering the fire. Krishna wanted to give him complete protection. Arjuna however would not desist from entering the fire unless the son of Brahmana were brought back. Therefore Krishna promised him, I shall bring back the Brahmana's son, do not try to commit suicide. If Lord Krishna were going to see Lord Vishnu only to reclaim the son of Brahmana then. He would have been waited until the tenth son was taken. He would not have waited until the tenth son was taken. But when the tenth son was taken away by Mahavishnu and when Arjuna was therefore ready to enter the fire because of the promise. Was going to prove false. That serious situation made Lord Krishna decide to go with Arjuna to see Mahavishnu. It is stated that Arjuna is an empowered incarnation of Naranara Raya. He is, he is even sometimes called Naranara Raya. The Naranara Raya incarnation is one of Lord Vishnu's planetary expansion. Therefore when Krishna and Arjuna went to see Lord Vishnu, it is to be understood that Arjuna visited. His Naranara Raya capacity just as Krishna. He displayed his pastime in Dwarka, acted in his Vasudevah capacity. After visiting the spiritual world, Arjuna concluded that whatever opulence anyone can show within the material world. Or spiritual worlds is all a gift of Lord Krishna. Lord Krishna is manifested in various form as Vishnu Tatva and Jiva Tatva. Or in other words as Swamsha and, and Vibhinamsha. Yeah, so Krishna expands himself in Vishnu Tatva. And, and Jiva Tatva. He can therefore display himself by the, by his different transcendental pastime in the portion of either. Swamsha or Vibhinamsha as he likes but he always, he remains in the original Supreme Personality of God. The concluding portion of the Krishna's pastime is found in the ninetieth chapter of the tenth canto of Shrimad Bhagavatam and in this chapter. So Godev Goosami wanted to explain how Krishna lived happily in Dwarka with all opulences. Krishna's opulence of strength had already been, been displayed in the different pastimes. And now it will be shown how his. How his residence at Dwarka. Displayed his opulence of wealth and beauty. In this material world, the opulence of wealth and beauty are considered highest of all opulence. Yet they are only a perverted reflection of these opulence in the spiritual world. So whatever opulence that we have in this material world is a perverted reflection of the spiritual world. Therefore while Krishna stayed on this planet as the Supreme Personality of God it, his opulence of wealth and beauty had no comparison within the three worlds. Krishna enjoyed sixteen thousand beautiful wives and it is most significant that he lived at Dwarka. As the only husband of these thousands of beautiful women. This is specifically stated that he was the only husband of the sixteen thousand wives. It is of course not unheard of in the history. Of the world that a powerful king would keep many hundreds of queen. But although such a king may be the only husband of so many wives, he could not enjoy all of them. All at once. At one time. Lord Krishna however enjoyed all his sixteen thousand wives simultaneously. Just a minute, let me go through how many things are remaining so that we complete this within next day. Okay. Let me read a bit. Although it may be state, it may be said that yogis. Just a minute, just a minute. Although it may be said that yogis can, yogis also can expand their bodies in many forms. The yogi's expansion and Lord Krishna's expansion are not same. Krishna is therefore. Krishna is therefore sometimes called Yogeshvara, master of all yogis. In the vedic literature, we find that yogi Sob Badri Muni expanded himself into eight. But that expansion was like a television expansion. The television image is manifested in millions of expansion but those expansion cannot, cannot act differently. They are simply reflection of the original and can only act exactly as the original does. Krishna's expansion is not material. Like the expansion of the television of the, television or the yogi. When Narada visited the different palaces of Krishna. He saw that Krishna in, he is different expansions was variously engaged in each and every palace of the queen. So he was simultaneously dealing with sixteen thousand queens, sixteen thousand wives and he was performing different, different act. It was not like some reflection was there. There is a sun and moon is a reflection of sun. Moon is showing a reflection of sun's power, sun's light. That is not the case. There is sun and there is another sun and there is another sun and there is another sun, all at once, acting differently. There is one more thing, acting differently. So. It is also said that Krishna lived, lived in Dwarka as husband of goddess of fortune. Queen Lukmini is the goddess of fortune and all other queens are her expansion. So if Krishna, the chief of the Brishni dynasty enjoyed with the goddess of fortune in full opulence. The queen of Krishna are described as permanently youthful and beautiful. Although Krishna had grandchildren and grand, great grandchildren. Neither Krishna nor his wife looked older than sixteen or twenty years of age. The young queens were so beautiful that when they moved, they appeared like a lightning move in the sky. They were always dressed with excellent ornaments and garments. And were always engaged in the sporting activities like dancing, singing or playing balls on the roofs of, of the palaces. The dancing of tennis playing. The dancing of tennis-playing of girls in the material world are a perverted reflection of the original pastime of the personality of Godhead Krishna and his wives. The roads and streets of the city of Dwarka were always crowded with elephant, horses, chariot and infantry soldiers. When elephants are engaged in the serv- in, in service. They are given liquor to drink. And it is said that elephants in Dwarka were given so much liquor that they would sprinkle a, a great quantity of it on the road and walk on the street intoxicated. The infantry soldiers passing on the street were profusely decorated with golden ornaments and horses. And golden chariots plied along the street. In all directions of Dwarka city, whether one would turn his eyes, he would find green parks and garden. Each of them filled with trees and plants laden with fruits and flowers. Because there were so many nice trees of fruits and flowers, all of them sweetly chirping birds. All the sweetly chirping birds. And buzzing bumblebees joined together to make a sweet vibration, the city of Dwarka thus fully displayed all opulence. The heroics of the dynasty of Yadu. The heroes of the dynasty of Yadu used to think themselves the most fortunate residents of the city. And actually, they enjoyed all transcendental facilities. Now I am reading a bit incorrectly, so I should conclude something early. Maybe in fifteen minutes. All the sixteen thousand palaces of Krishna’s queen were situated in the beautiful city of Dwarka. Lord Krishna, the supreme eternal enjoyer of all these facilities, expanded himself into sixteen thousand forms and simultaneously engaged in the different family affairs. Or in those sixteen thousand palaces, in each and every, in each and every one of the palaces, there were nicely decorated gardens and lakes. The crystal clear water of the lake contained many blooming lotus flowers in different colors like blue, yellow, white and red. And the saffron powder from the lotus flowers was blown all around by the breeze. All the lakes were full of beautiful swans, ducks and cranes, crying occasionally with melodious sounds. Lord Shri Krishna sometimes entered those lakes or rivers or the rivers with his wives and enjoyed swimming pastimes with them in full jubilation. Sometimes the wives of Lord Krishna, who were all goddess of fortune, would embrace the lord in the midst of the water. While swimming or taking a bath. And red vermilion of kunkuma decorated their beautiful breast would adorn the chest of the lord with reddish color. The impersonalist would not dare believe that, that the spiritual world where, where. Spiritual world, there are such varieties of enjoyment. But in order to demonstrate the factual ever blissful enjoyment of the spiritual world, Lord Krishna descended to this planet and showed that, showed that the spiritual world is not devoid of such pleasurable facilities of life. The only difference is that in the spiritual world, such facilities are eternal, never-ending occurrences. Whereas in the material world, these are simply imper- impermanent perverted reflection. When Lord Krishna was engaged in such enjoyment, the Gandharvas and professional musician would glorify him with the melodious musical concerts. Accompanied by kettle drum, riddanga and other drums. Along with stringed instrument and brass, brass bugles, the whole atmosphere would change into greatly festive celebration. In a festive mood, the wives of lord would, would sometimes sprinkle water on his body with a sprinkle-like instrument. And the lord would simultaneously wet the bodies of the queen. When Krishna and the queens engaged themselves in this pastime, it seemed as if the, the heavenly king Yaksha Raja. Were engaged in pastimes with his many wives. Yaksha Raja is also known as Guevara and is considered the treasurer of the heavenly kingdom. When the wives of Lord Krishna thus became wet, their breasts and thighs would increase in beauty a thousand times. And their long hair would fall down to decorate those parts of the body. Hmm, the beautiful flowers placed in the hair would fall and queens simultaneously harassed by the lords throwing water at them. Would approach him on, on the plea of snatching the sprinkle-like, syringe-like instrument. Syringe-like instrument, here too I read sprinkle, it’s syringe-like instrument. This attempt would create a situation wherein the lord would embrace them willingly. As they willingly approached them, approached him. The wives of Krishna would approach Krishna. And this would create an atmosphere of a spiritual bliss. When the garland on the neck of the lord then touched the breast of the queens, the whole bodies, their whole bodies became crowded with saffron yellow. Being engaged in the celestial pastime of Krishna, of queens, forget themselves and loosen their hair appeared like beautiful waves of water, of a river. When the queens sprinkled water on the body of Krishna. Or he sprinkled water on the bodies of queens, the whole situation appeared just like that. Of an elephant enjoying in the lake with many she elephant. Now there is one very beautiful thing out here. Now we are trying to understand this, this pastime. But in that pastime, we have to understand one more fact. Now, Rukmini Devi is no other than Krishna’s own energy. Now Krishna is creating, now Krishna is Atma Ram. Krishna is not required to enjoy or being enjoyed. Krishna is not required, he is Atma Ram, he is self-satisfied. Now why Krishna is doing that? It is because of all of us. Now father does a lot of acts. He makes the child feel that I am doing for myself. But actually does it for the child. Similarly Krishna is doing each and every act for us. This makes the spiritual world as, as blissful as anyone could. Imagination is beyond our capacity. This makes the spiritual world as blissful as it could be. Yeah, after enjoying the full, after enjoying fully among themselves, the queen and Lord Krishna would come out of the water and they would give up their wet garments. Which were very valuable or be taken away by the professional singers and dancers. These singers and dancers had no means of subs- subsistence. Other than the rewards of the valuable garments and ornaments left by the queens and kings on such occasion. The whole system of society was so well planned that all the members of the society in the different past position of Brahmana. Shatraya, Vasya and Sudra had no difficulty in airing their, in earning their livelihood. Earlier the situation was like that. There was no competition among the divisions of the society, the original conception of the caste system was so pla- planned. That a group of men engage in a particular type of occupation could not compete with another group of men engage in different competition. So there was no competition, there is no, nothing like I would take your profit, you take my profit or something, there is no competition. In this way, Lord Krishna used to enjoy the company of his sixteen thousand wives. Some devotees of the lord who want to love the Supreme Personality of Godhead, in the mellows of the conjugal love are elevated to that position of becoming wives of Krishna. And Krishna keeps them always attached to him by his kind behavior, Krishna behavior with his wives. His movement, his movements, his taking, his talking with them, his smiling, his embracing and similar other activities which are just like those of a loving husband. Keep them away, keep them always very much attracted. I am reading wrong again and again, six more minutes, just six more minutes. I am sorry. Krishna’s behavior with his wives, his movements, his talking with them, his smiling, his embracing and similar other activities which are just like those of a loving husband. Kept them always very much attached to him, that is the highest perfection of life. If someone remains always attached to Krishna, it is to be understood that he is liberated and his life is successful. With any devotee who loves Krishna with his heart and soul, Krishna reciprocates in such, such a way that the devotee cannot but remain attached to him. This reciprocate, reciprocal dealing with Krishna and his devotees are so attractive that a devotee cannot think of any subject matter other than Krishna. For all the queens, Krishna was the only worshipable object. They were always absorbed in the thoughts of Krishna, the lotus-eyed and the beautiful blackish personality of Godhead. Sometimes in the thoughts of Krishna, they remain silent and in great ecstasy of bhava and anubhava. They sometimes spoke as if in delirium. Sometimes even in the presence of Lord Krishna, they vividly described the pastime that they has enjoyed in the river, in the lake, lake or river with him. Somehow such talks is described here. The queen said, dear kurari bird. Now it is very late at night, everyone is sleeping, the whole world is now calm and peaceful. At this time, the Supreme Personality of Godhead is sleeping, although his knowledge is undisturbed by my circumstance. Then why are you not sleeping? Why are you lamenting like this, like this throughout the whole night? Dear friend. Is it that you are so attached to the lotus eyes of lord, of the Supreme Personality of Godhead? And by his sweet smiling and attractive words exactly as we are? Do those dealings of Supreme Personality of Godhead pinch your heart as they do ours? Hello Chakravarti, why have you closed your eyes? Are you searching after your husband? Who may have gone to foreign countries? Why are you lamenting so pitifully? Alas, it appears that you are. Alas, it appears that you are very much aggrieved. Or is, is, is it a fact that you are also. You also are willing to become an eternal servitor of the Supreme Personality of Godhead? Why think that you are anxious to put a garland on the lotus feet of Krishna, of lord? And then, then place it in your hair? Oh dear ocean, why are you roaring all day and night? Don’t you sleep? Don’t you like to sleep? We think you have been attacked by insomnia. Or if we are not wrong, our dear Shamsundara has tactfully taken away your gravity. And the power of forbidance. Which are your natural qualifications. Is it a fact for this reason that you are suffering from insomnia like us? Yes, we admit that there is no remedy for this disease. Someone who finds love of Krishna, now thi- this is ecstasy, this is ecstasy. We could not even imagine what we are reading. Dear moon god, we think that you have been attacked by severe, severe type of tuberculosis. For this reason, you are becoming thinner and thinner day by day. Oh lord, you are now so weak. That your thin rays cannot dissipate the darkness of night. Or is it a fact that just like us, you have been stunned by the mysteriously sweet words of Lord Shamsundara? Or is it a fact that it is be- because of the severe anxiety that you are so grave? Oh breeze from the Himalaya, why have we, what, what have we done? To you that you are so intent at teasing us by awakening our lust to meet Krishna? Do you not know that we have already been injured? By the crooked policy of Personality of Godhead, dear Himalayan breeze, please know that we have already been stricken. There is no need to injure us more and more. Dear beautiful cloud. The cloud of your beautiful body exactly resembles the bodily hue of our dear Mokshaamsundara. We think therefore. That you are very dear to our lord, the chief of the dynasty of Yadus. And because you are so dear to him, you are absorbed in meditation, exactly as we are. We can appreciate that your heart is full of anxiety for Shamsundara. You appear excessively eager to see him. And we see that for this reason only drops of tears are gliding down from your eyes. Just as they are from ours. Dear black cloud, we must admit frankly. That to establish an intimate relation with, relationship with Shamsundara means to purchase unnecessary anxiety. While we are otherwise comfortable at home. Generally, the cuckoo sound, its cooling vibration at the end, at the end of the day or early in the morning when the queens heard, heard the coo- queen of the cuckoo at the na- end of night. heard heard the coo- king wing of the cuckoo at the ni- end of night, this they said dear cuckoo, your voice dear cuckoo, your voice is very sweet. Or should we continue next time onwards? Because we have some ecstasy part. And it is long, it is not short, but I think we can complete. Whatever it is, I am not able to read properly, it does not make sense. So these queens are talking with all the all the elements. Okay, now first is cuckoo, after that mountain, then dry river. After dry river swan. Okay. Let's continue from this this uh part next time onwards. Next time onwards. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Many many thanks for everyone to join in, keep on joining, keep on chanting, keep on uh Krishna uh sharing Krishna as well. And let's do Vasnapranamutra before the end. Vansha Kalpitaru Bhischa.
Vansha Kalpitaru Bhischa.
Pritha Sambhayaevichya.
Aa. Pritha Sambhayaevichya.
Patita Nam Patne Lekho.
Patita Nam Saagune Lekho.
Rashnaveshwari Namoh Namah.
Rashnaveshwari Namoh Namah.
Shankar Tilaashamilikhi.
Jai.
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 Jai. Jai.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Krishna.
Hare Rama, Hare Rama.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, everyone. Many many thanks for everyone to join in, Hare Krishna. Thank you so much. Let's continue from this one next time. We have just one one chapter and after that we have uh end of book summary, very very small. What do we call? Summary description? No. A note about this edition. Very very small. Only two paragraph. So this is what we have to do next time. We could have completed but it does not make any sense when we are not reading properly, yeah. So till till this point we have completed. So almost uh thirty percent of it we have completed, right? We have to complete sixty percent, just sixty percent. So we would be able to complete, I believe, in time. Next time it would be easier for us to. Yeah. By the way, my my eyes were seeing everything as uh one one, so it was becoming difficult, increasingly difficult. It it uh whenever it gets stretched, it becomes a bit difficult. It's okay, so let's end at this and maybe continue next time onwards. Thank you everyone for to to join in. Mataji, if you have any question, you may ask. I believe there is no question. If you have, you may ask on WhatsApp also, yeah. Let's let's end at this. Thank you everyone to join in, Hare Krishna.